Do you feel they have a conflict of interest? All right, how about item four, disclosure of outside communications regarding the long-range plan? Hearing none, I will move on, call to public. Uh, I'm gonna paraphrase this, if there's anybody in the public that would like to get up and speak for four minutes, please do so at this time. Seeing nobody in the audience, I will move on to item five, public hearing none. Item six, old business, comprehensive plan update, final draft report. I'll start by sin, there's a lot here. I spent two hours, I ran out of gas. I, I hope staff can give us the highlights of each chapter, I don't know what you have in mind, but uh, that's what I would hope for. If anybody else have any expectations they want to throw out there before we get started?
I think I mentioned one before. Have it proofread.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's so noted, man, I will, we'll do that. I mean, there's a lot of things that still need to be done as far as the overall look of the document. I, I do want to change the pictures around, I'm not particularly happy with those, there's formatting issues, but really just want to focus tonight on the, the words and the intent of the comp plan and not get too bogged down into, you know, whether the header's been flipped somehow or some things like that. We will have it proofread, we'll have it professionally printed as well, we're not just gonna throw it on our printer and yeah, you're gonna get a little bit better copy than just a heavy-duty staple in the upper cor- upper-left corner as we move through this. Yeah, we can run through the exist- the, the chapters now, some of these, some of this information obviously has been presented almost a year ago by our consultant and then Mike and I picked it up about when we got to the land use plan. And I guess really I want to just engage you all on, on some of the items and the existing conditions. I don't know that there's anything particularly that we need to cover in the existing conditions so much, I mean, we've, you know, obviously you're citizens here, you know the community for, for many years, I don't know that the information that we provided is, has changed since we started the comprehensive plan that we need to update some of the existing chapter information. So with that part of it, I'll just ask, do you have any comments on the existing conditions? I do think that the study area is a pretty important part of the existing conditions in, in the sense that we are now, I guess, putting our footprint and our stamp on all these areas farther south as far as DeSoto's growth area. This also, this document we will share with Johnson County Planning and they will recognize that obviously the unincorporated areas are still their, part of their legal jurisdiction, however, by telling them that this is now a part of our urban growth area, that they'll coordinate with us on more significant issues and development as projects occur in their, under their authority. So that's something I think is pretty important to note about the existing conditions is that we've, we've increased our study area significantly over the previous comp plan.
I think the most significant part of that is we're addressing sunflower now.
Yeah, okay. In essence, that's really what Mike said, that's what's kind of, we've kind of staked our claim to ultimately be-
Johnson County is doing a comp plan as we speak. Have you been in con- has anybody been in contact with them on that?
Not particularly, they do send us updates and they invite us to meetings, but we haven't really participated. I don't think they've asked us formally to comment on anything. I've not seen anything, Mike, have you?
No, so they're not redoing, I mean, I've heard rumors they might be redoing their rural policy area plan.
All right, last month at Board of Zoning Appeals, Johnson County, we have a, one of the planning commissioners on the BZA, and one of our highlights every month is current planning commission news and she said they're, they're redoing the comp plan, it's in process. So, exactly what that means, I mean, I don't know, I asked her about sunflower and she said, "Well, it hadn't really come up." Yes, they're not, you know, so I don't know if it's worth the call, so you, you're waiting for them to call you?
Yeah, well, they typically send us all sorts of notices for things and they've, I guess they've not engaged us in any, at any level that I know of, that hey, we're gonna be doing, updating their comp plan and-
Would they involve you on something like that, though? Would they involve you and your input and everything? They're not gonna just do it without you guys?
I can't promise.
Yeah.
But, you know, like I said, it was a rumor I heard before, I seem to remember them saying they were going to start that, but I, we haven't heard that they engaged that.
Maybe there's not much done, but. The reason, the reason it came up is because we have BZA thing about land right next to Edgerton, the city of Edgerton. And it's that land out by the new, you know, the rail to-
Intermodal.
Rail to wheels, whatever it's called, intermodal facility, and they've got, I don't know if anybody's been out there, but man, you've got big equipment and big, big areas and re, reworking, uh, 207s and, and there's little folks that live down in there and they want, you know, they're, they're concerned about what's going on, they're asking for variances. So that's the only we- reason I knew about it, but. So, it's, it's out there. I couldn't say anything about the status and they had not, the commissioner had said that sunflower hadn't even come up, so. So FYI.
Yeah, I think the thing with sunflowers, people just, and still to this day don't know what to think about what's gonna happen out there. With the cleanup still going on and litigation kind of flying around, it's just kind of a it, it's an impenetrable kind of situation where you, so the initial plan that the, the county put together, I think they call it a park within a park or some sort of, they've got a community park, that's still the plan on record and that's what everybody's kind of at least still referring to it as. So is there anything on the, or the existing conditions that, I mean, it got into some-
That's good history, where did you get that?
Well, that's, I will have to credit Todd Striler for pulling up a lot of this information. He, I will give him credit, he spent a lot of time initially here in addition to, and I'm kind of jumping into the public involvement in the critical issues, but you know, we had some public meetings which weren't particularly well-attended. However, the online survey that we did, we got four or 500 responses as I recall, as far as people filling out the form and actually taking the time to do the goals and objectives, answer the questions, all that kind of information, which is probably the backbone of the, of chapter two, the identifying the critical issues. One thing he also did was, he spent a lot of time just, just walking around, going into businesses and, and talking to some members there. He did some one-on-one interviews, I know he talked with Joe Roy and Don Parr from the development community. I'm not sure who else, he might have sat down with you, Richard, I believe.
We don't, yeah, I spent an hour with him.
And I know he met with the mayor and some other folks, I mean, he even went out, one time went out with Jimmy Euler and you're a braver man than I, but talked to him about, you know, the city and his, Jimmy Euler's relationship with it, which is kind of non-existent, but
This says final draft, though, so after you, you are gonna, I don't need to bring any of this stuff up that I found in here, you're gonna have somebody-
Well, I mean, I'll take the, if you've got some comments that you just wanna, I mean, I can take those and incorporate it into our master document, but we will have, after today, we're going to go to the council with this at their July 18th meeting and then the 27th, we have our public hearing. So between now and the 18th, we really need to tighten this thing up and get it proofread, get, get some of the formatting issues corrected and all those types of things.
I'm not so worried about formatting, it's just garbage and repetitive things and things like that, but if you're gonna have somebody proofread, anybody that's gonna proofread is gonna catch this stuff.
Well, I mean, I would like to take, I mean, if you've got your comments, I'd like to make sure that I can-
Well, it's just, some of them are just petty things, like on page six on, uh, chapter one, DeSoto and the surround area, should be surrounding area.
Okay.
Uh, the sentence below it, Native Americans migrated west of the Mississippi River in the 17th century in search of new hunting grounds and ongoing invasions from Iraqi, not Iraqis, whatever they're from.
Aracoid.
Aracoid. So I think that could be structured a little bit different. And I'm not sure this is the right word, many of the native cultures in the area were relocated. Is that what they call, I thought down at the bottom of the page six, would it be native tribes instead of cultures, but that may just be some of the time we have. Up on page eight, first chapter, if boundaries were the same today, are the same today possibly, up on that first paragraph.
Okay.
Like I said, some of these, it's, I used to have to periphery things, but it drives me nuts.
That's your hourly rate?
Yeah.
Not enough, guaranteed. On page 11, this continued growth and prosperity over the last two decades has evolved DeSoto's from a small town, evolved DeSoto from a small town to DeSoto's. My concern is if this is going out as a public document, we want it to read correctly.
Sure, absolutely.
Over on page six, on chapter two, it talks about the city's Hispanic population. Did we decide we weren't gonna put Hispanic in there?
We did, and I, I know I did a specific check on that and-
Look down on the, uh, section B, chapter two.
What was the word? Not Mexican?
No. It was, what's another, ethnic? Is it ethnic or something to that? I couldn't remember the word when I was, something to that, I just think we didn't want to make a specific comment about that. On chapter two, page 10, the council should continue doing creative stuff to help develop-
Does it say stuff or?
Yeah, no, that doesn't read very well for us. Not so good. Creative ideas, something along that line, maybe, not creative.
You said page 10 on chapter two?
Chapter two, uh-huh.
Where's, where's that come, that thing on page 10 at the top of the page, incremental improvements, let's grow slow. Where'd that come from? Top of the page there in number one.
Yeah.
Let's grow slow. Well, I don't know, I just, I got just a bunch of general marks, but I didn't, we were on the page you were at.
Yeah.
That's what I would've thought.
One of the other things I just, on page, chapter two, page two, on the bolded area over there, somebody may have said this, there are a few residential areas that don't fit in, best described as misfits. These homes are not pretty, but provide the warmth and housing that is necessary. Folks are able to live in their own home for the price of most apartments. To me, it, I mean, I realize that's, might be true, but is it something we want to bold and put in our comprehensive plan?
All right, where are you at?
The blue, the blue part, on the right side.
Oh, in the, in the, on the edge, oh.
I just don't think that's-
Those are comments from the interviews.
Well, maybe so, but is it something we want in our comprehensive plan?
Well.
I don't think that's-
I have to read Linda on that.
I just think we can pick another statement to put in there.
That whole thing.
Well, I think you, these are quotes from people, they should be in there as they said them, but they, they need to be marked in such a way that-
They don't need to be bolded or-
Yeah, they don't need to be highlighted in the, in the margin.
Wouldn't know this was in, in individuals' comment.
Well, that's what I'm saying, these need to be shown as comments somehow from individuals, not from the city people.
Yeah.
But they don't need to be all listed in here.
No, they're not, there's one, two, but there's three.
Well, let's pick another one, let's not feature our town.
That's probably a bad, good one to maybe just draw. Maybe, you know.
Okay.
Unless it's got significance.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't believe the number of those types of statements that have already been, I mean, this document's three times longer than, you remember?
I know you guys are reduced to the law.
So, yeah, this is one I think we missed.
Yeah.
Cause I think you're right, I don't-
We don't want to highlight that.
Somebody fired up over that one.
You called me a misfit.
A head, a shoe fits.
Yeah, we could.
Recently.
Okay, that's my old stuff, so I-
Well, while we're on chapter two, let me just turn some pages there. Hey, you know what, there's one, one good thing I got from the history. If, and, and this kind of rolls into, you know, DeSoto days this year, the theme for the parade, you know, DeSoto rocks, something exciting to do in DeSoto, you know, I'm trying to think, all these, these things, you know, background, history, all I can think of is the river. But this throws this whole other, you know, Ferdinand DeSoto, uh, the DeSoto car, the ammo plant, the, uh, the Black Bob's, the blah, 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 and the Shani, American Federation of Shani or what, you know, throws all these aspects, a statue of John Possum, I mean, it certainly opens up some historical possibilities for advertising, that's all I'm saying. Thought that was kind of interesting. None of them are necessarily worth, worth much, except if you're really looking for something and you want to advertise a city, you can probably find something in chapter one. Okay, so, chapter two. Okay, it said the interviews lasted one hour on the top of page two. I don't remember speaking for an hour, but maybe I did. Those are all pretty good comments, except the one Linda pointed out. Okay, that, over on page five, and this gets into a whole string of thing on housing stock. On chapter two, page five, C2, okay. All these recipients, or recipients, all these respondents believe DeSoto has sufficient housing. Most replied that the housing stock needs more homes for first-time buyers. Now that, that's not necessarily an factual statement, that's a statement by, by a guy being interviewed. I want to know what, you know, is that something DeSoto should promote? Is that, I mean, that shows up throughout the rest of this, you know, $150,000 houses. I don't know, I don't know what you can build, I mean, if you can.
I, I read that as he was just sort of paraphrasing some of the comments. And we've had that discussion here at the planning commission about, and housing is a challenge for, you know, a, a young person coming out of college or even that's been working for a few years that
Yeah, and, you know, we just had Marty Schukert, RDG, came down and redid the housing assessment that was done in 2004. He's, uh, he came into town a couple of months ago and just presented his findings to the EDC group that, uh, last week, um, just the big red flag is just there, there's no entry-level housing. And the problem demographically for us is that we are growing demographically in the older age groups and shrinking in the younger age groups. And this is screaming, not that we don't have jobs, but that we don't have housing. And so, the main, the main conclusion of his findings are that, yeah, of course, affordable housing, or entry-level housing, however you want to phrase that, is the number one issue for DeSoto. And we're not alone, that's for everyone. And, and, you know, there's even discussions, you know, on the EDC front about ways to incentivize, um, lower-income housing like that, so. And it shows up here, it's no surprise, uh, and I think, I think you'll see it, it become a priority of the council eventually, or soon, when, when that, when that, when those findings are presented.
So why did you say the last one was done in 2007?
Well, you know, I said four, I think it may have been 2006. Somewhere in that, somewhere in that.
And what was Marty's last name?
Schukert, S-C-H-U-K-E-R-T. And he's with RDG. They're out of Omaha. He did, uh, the kind of the concept plan for the downtown streetscape.
Oh, that Marty, Bushy Heard.
Yeah.
Everybody likes Marty, yeah, I know who Marty is, no, yeah. Well, I mean, some places in here mentions $150,000.
Oh, does it?
And those auto-
Where that price point is, is tough, but anymore, anymore less than $250,000, I think, would qualify in Johnson County as-
So do we want that statement put in there, that low-level statement? Cause I saw that too when it triggered that.
The $150 specifically, you know, we can talk about that.
I think that one should, should drop, yeah.
Out of curiosity. Out of curiosity, what are the houses selling for in the old town there?
Well, they're, they're pushing through $100,000, you know. Yeah, we're talking about like an older one that's-
And, and I think the realization is, if, you know, for starter housing or low-income housing, you can't do it throughout country, in any metropolitan sort of urbanized area without incentives, without some sort of a public involvement, a public-private partnership, or some sort of a land bank situation, or something where at least the tax burden is taken off of those, so that the, you know, the unit price can come down. Because we can't control the cost of materials or the cost of labor, or really the cost of land, or any of that.
Which Don said the cost of light, uh, building materials is the highest it's ever been.
Yeah, yeah, and that's not something that- Everybody is building everywhere. Yeah, and because it's booming and the profit margins are so much better at the higher-end market and the risk is lower, and so it's, it's almost, um, usually in a, in a, in a market like this, a free market, the higher the risk, the higher the profit margin, the lower the risk, the lower it is. It's almost opposite the way it is now. If you're trying to make low-income, low-cost affordable housing, that's a higher risk with a lower profit margin. Than if you're gonna build a 600, 700, $800,000 house on spec for somebody, there's no, there's no, really no risk in that. So that's the, all really all of it.
Well, where I started was, it's okay if somebody in the interview process mentions that, but I'm, I'm not so sure the city back on in here should promote affordable housing. I don't know how you promote it, cause that's an economic-driven thing, um, especially $150,000, so I just throw a caution flag up that-
Where is the $150,000, did you find it?
I, I, as we go through here, I'll, I'll see it, but-
It's on page 14, chapter two, D4. It says $125,000.
$125,000.
$125,000 to $300,000, which is not really accurate. We've got all those houses that, uh, what's his name just built, not Don, the other one.
Jim.
Joe Roy's, those are two-something.
Those are over in the twos, yeah.
Well, yeah, but they're, they're like $295,000, though, that's, they're, they're in the 290s.
Well, maybe we just need to take-
Yeah, we'll change, we'll take a look at that range, yeah.
We can take the lower number.
Yeah, and, and again, these are respondents from a survey.
Well, I find that when, when you've got like a house for rent or something and you advertise a low price, I must say this at low voice, you get bottom feeders. I mean, you know, you get all, and, and they got no credit, they got no nothing, they got, you know, blah, 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 and it's just a mess, they've been, you know, been in prison or something and, you know, they, they're just trying to get a head start in life and, or get a restart, kickstart, get back into things and it gets, it gets vicious, so I'm, enough said on that. We should use caution in promoting low-income hous- I'll call it low-income housing, there's probably a better name for it. What else? Okay, I like this stuff on page six, I think Linda liked, must like it too, section 2.3, weaknesses, dilapidated housing. Those are some good comments from the general public. And, okay. On page seven, 68, uh, C5, employment, almost 68% of survey respondents agreed that there are not sufficient employment opportunities in town. And, um, I guess that's, I guess it's true, they can't, they can't seem to keep help down at Harps and they can't find anybody to work.
That's all over everywhere, though, now. People just don't want to work.
Well, that's what I, yeah, that, I, my point is this should be cautious, we should be cautious about. Make, I mean, it's okay if somebody made, called this out a critical issue in the interview process, but does the city see it as a critical issue? I don't know, maybe it is, maybe it is a critical issue.
And that's our other place for $150,000, too.
Yeah, right, on page seven, number D is where the $150 shows up. Okay. I think that I, affordable, um-
Yeah, I think that would be a good option, so.
Okay, page, ah, I got it out of, um, got it out of order here. Well, I'll page anyway, page 16, chapter two. Uh, I like this, preserve the health, safety, and welfare of the community and promote economic development incentives that create jobs, preserve DeSoto's small-town feel and blah, blah, I really, that critical issue summary, I really like that statement about health, safety, and welfare, that's kind of the bottom line, what we ought to be doing.
Back, could we back up a little bit on page 13 on chapter two? It talks about revitalization of existing commercial areas, B2. Strip malls facing K10 should be updated, that was just done, right? So, we want that in there still?
Okay, on page 13.
Page 13, chapter two, B2.
Oh, yeah.
Strip malls facing K10 should be updated.
It's already been done, Joe Roy went in and redid the whole thing?
Yeah, that's what I mean, I think that needs to be removed.
Yeah, we can take that out.
Uh, yeah, I'm way out of order, cause I go from page 20 and I start going backwards, cause I three-hole punched these on the side and I got some of them reversed. So, let me go back to pa- page 14. Housing and neighborhood stability threats. Overvalued homes, new housing prices too high. Okay, that's, that's a statement. I guess that's all it is, it's just a statement. It creates a huge economic gap in the city's housing stock, okay, fine. As long as, as long as those statements aren't coming on, on item D at the bottom of page 14, as long as those aren't coming from us, those are coming from the interviews. I'm good with both statements, but.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that, I mean, this chapter is based on our- Well, I think it's pretty clear that, I mean, this chapter is based on our comments that we received from the interviews, the online surveys.
I mean, how, how do we know that home prices are overval- I mean, that's like, like, alright, back on page fourteen, number D two, how do we know they're overvalued?
Yeah.
I mean, like, if you, um.
Right, how do we know that they're too high?
How, what gives us the?
That's true, we don't have a problem, everything's selling.
If they're selling, they're not.
Too high.
Too high.
So do we have to have that statement in there?
No, I don't think so, we can certainly.
Well, item two maybe needs to re. If, if these. Item two need, maybe needs to be removed or reversed, or rewritten, and, um, this thing, um, well, how is it, hardly anything available in the one twenty-five to three hundred K range. On item four, that, that's kind of goofy.
That's not.
So I think, and it's beyond me to tell you how to rewrite it, but I think that, that group needs work.
Well, we'll take a look at it, Richard.
Uh, now. I think one, I mean, the thing to keep in mind though, is that, that particular section you're talking about, the, the heading paragraph, that's section two point five on page twelve.
Yeah.
Says during the public participation process, individuals were asked to identify the threats. Threats are organized into five places, and there they are. Following is a summary of the critical issues as they relate to the threats facing DeSoto. Maybe that last sentence should be revised a little bit, say, following are the critical issues that these participants identified for DeSoto.
Keyword right there.
And then you can leave a lot of those things in, cause that's just what they said, and we're listening to what they're saying.
Yes.
And so, and we're even putting it in our plan, even though it might not be the most flattering stuff ever.
Right.
This is what they said.
Yep.
So I think we change that one sentence, and a lot of these uneasiness about these statements goes away. I mean, what, that doesn't.
Yeah, yeah, if it's, if it's, if we're not offering it, if it is strictly.
Yeah.
X Y Z John Doe saying it, fine. I'm, it just doesn't re, well, I'm just pointing it out, that it's goofy. Okay, on page thirteen. Item two, chapter two, item two, under-valued. When asked to rate DeSoto's assets in strength, the historic downtown was at the bottom of the list, thirteen out of sixteen. And, you know, I got all kinds of funny thoughts about downtown, yeah, um. I would imagine there are people that moved into K ten place, that, uh, shop at Harps, and maybe come down to JT's or something, but maybe even, maybe never even been down, just maybe drove through once. So my question is, how much emphasis, and it, and it kind of shows up back in here, uh, how much emphasis should there be in downtown?
I think we're getting a lot of traffic with Cause Coffee, with KJs, that's bringing people into our community. I think we need to step it up a little bit, dress it up a little bit.
Trying to get a post office on Saturday morning.
Yeah.
You can't.
You can't, the parking's all filled up now.
You know, that's where, I try to go to, I drive by, when I deliver meals at ten thirty, there's never anybody parked at the crossing at ten thirty and eleven in the morning, they're just. So they're, they're doing alright.
Oh, they're doing very well.
Good, good, well.
Yeah, and KJs is doing very well. And that's where I think we should clean up our downtown, so that it, it attracts more people. When people do come into our community, they seem a nice, clean community.
I got a question, and this may be really stupid. Well, it isn't to me, so that's the only thing that matters. Critical issues. It's basically comments from people that are stating their opinions, which we need to pay attention to. Not saying that's not important. Is something like that normally part of a comp plan? Isn't a comp plan, our city's ideas of what we wanna do, when we wanna do it, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I'm not, you know, about how it's written, I'm not sure, but the, the major part of any comp plan, it's gotta be the community's plan. And this, I think, is a good representation, and it's a, it's a, it's a good summary of a lot of that public input.
See, I'm just looking at it from the standpoint, since I've never done one of these before, this should be a plan of what the city has come up with, what they wanna do, where they wanna do it. Take the critical issues as a planning start, but it's not part of the actual plan.
Yeah, I, I think this is just a way to document that.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
That process, I didn't, as I read it, didn't, it didn't raise a flag with me, you know.
Hey, I was thinking, if, if it's not normally, we just leave this whole chapter out.
We've never had it before.
Study it, learn from it, but not make it part of the actual plan.
Yeah, well.
But if, if it's, if that's the way the plan is, is structured around, then obviously, yeah, probably needs to be there.
I think it lends validity to it, I mean, like.
Okay.
We're, we're including these, even though they're not very flattering, some of this stuff isn't very flattering.
I know, I know.
But here it is in our plan, and so we're.
Well, like I said, since I've never done one, a comp plan, I mean, I've heard them, dealt with them, you know, final ones when I worked for the county, everything else, but I've never been in on starting one or updating one, so I wasn't sure, so, yeah, I see what you're saying, and it, that makes sense. That's where all the rest of this stuff comes from, is this chapter two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it was not in the last comp plan. This is nouveau, nouveau method. Okay, so, undervalued, when asked about the downtown, only three point out of five, three point out of, at three point one eight out of five, got, it got number thirteen out of sixteen ratings. That's what the public, John Q. Public felt. Okay, what, what's rough grass? I'm on page twelve, on chapter two. Second, second bullet down, pushing strollers through the rough grass.
No sidewalk.
Okay, is there a better, I guess that's the word, right from the, uh, right from the person saying.
Survey respondents.
Well, it's like, I have a sidewalk on my side of the street. Kids come from the pool, they walk down to the corner, they're wind up, then they have to move out into the street, cause there aren't no sidewalks from there on.
Oh, I was just saying that that word rough grass, have to walk through the lawn areas maybe instead.
That's just the grass coming up between your ass hole.
Okay, rough grass, alright, is that's a mixture, that's a blend of ragweed and fox tail, and crabgrass, uh, alright, well, anyway, I don't like the words rough grass. Alright, threats, let's see. Downtown shows up again, historic downtown is a critical issue. I'm not sure what these bullets are. Critical issues on page twelve, let's see, that would, let me go back to page eleven, if I can find it.
This was done last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
What would happen if you'd run the same thing now?
According to the future respondents, walkways and bike, bike paths make a city seem friendlier, they need to be designed, blah, blah, blah. And, uh, the following, it, okay, there should be sidewalks or paths, so that pedestrians do not have to constantly walk busy streets, and this is a list of them. Alright, nevermind.
I think what happened here is the sidewalks, more sidewalks on, more sidewalks on Commerce Drive. And then I think those bullets need to be moved over, I think that's what the problem is, because it says everywhere, what are we talking about everywhere? These bullets points just need to be moved over, right? Indented more.
Indented?
Yes. I think they're talking about sidewalks here, and then it, that needs to, they're talking about everywhere, new areas, and so it's, that's just formatting issue.
Okay, um.
You can pick any section of town you want to, there's sidewalk work that needs to be done anywhere.
Yeah. Okay, page ten, chapter two, page ten, public service opportunities. The following public service related opportunities were noted during the public engagement process. Okay, let's grow slow, that's okay, that's what somebody wanted to do. Fine.
Yeah, when you read some of these, you can always tell who.
Who he was talking to at the time.
Might have been me, I don't know. Okay, development review, the city does a lot for developers without giving in, into qua- without giving in to quality or zoning matters. Okay, I guess that's a good statement. Um, number three, update zoning codes. They're out of touch with the small town agro mentality. Okay, this is a big point to me. Are we Tonganoxi, Baldwin, Udora, or are we Lenexa, or are we in between? Our regs way back, going back to, uh, the guy that owned the liquor store before Mike, I can't spitting his name out, he was a planning commission guy. Him and I grabbed Lenexa requirements and brought them out here, and I think.
Richard Brazukas.
Brazukas, yes, yes, and, um. Okay, so are those regs, are those regs out of touch? They're not out of touch going east, are they out of, they're out of touch maybe going to Udora, Baldwin, or Tonga?
I'd like to see our, I've talked about that before, I'd like to see this reviewed again, our property maintenance, but, and see if.
I would say you'd find more property maintenance.
Going east than you do.
Northwest.
Well, what about Spring Hill and Gardner? Gardner's grown a lot. Lenexa maybe, I'd like to, I would like to compare our things, that's been a big point on mine for a long time.
Well, are they, this is just one person's opinion, that they're out of touch with small town agro mentality. And of the majority of the population. So, Mike, Mike, I just wrote example, but got a bunch of question marks there, who do we wanna be? So that, that's a whole topic. I realize somebody's just saying this, and we're copying what they said, but just.
Well, you know, there was a guy that come up here, I think to the last council meeting, talked about small town values. You know who I'm talking about?
I do. We can't compete with the rest surrounding community if we stay as we are, and we've got.
That's right, but you don't wanna get in a situation like Lenexa is. They have people, and all they do every day is drive through the neighborhood and target houses.
No, but. How would you like to live on some of the streets that don't have, I'm speaking.
Yeah, we are.
There are some areas in our community that, um, paintings just done halfway on multiple houses on that street. That does not encourage anybody to maintain their property values when they've gotta look down the street and see that. I don't wanna become another community that they go through and pick everything, but I also wanna be a community we're proud of, and that anybody living in our town can be proud of.
There were, there were two toilets, unconnected, sitting in the yard.
Not perfect.
Let's connect them.
Outside, get all the house around them, have them outside.
They were white, they were, they weren't sitting square, you know, they were at an angle.
We got the planters out of them or something.
One was on the walkway behind Hootamaki, coming, you know, on the back of the meadows, in the back of, backyard of that house. And the other one was down on Kill Creek, and it's since been, you know, cleaned up over there. But, uh, that kind of thing, yeah, I don't like it.
No, I don't either.
But, okay, small town mentality, out of touch, that's where we started. The whole code thing, um, maintenance codes, et cetera, target houses, let them do what they want. I mean, there's gotta be a happy ground, so.
Yeah, but what this is saying is that they're more restrictive than they should be. What they're saying is that we should back on, let people have a bathtub in their front yard, and, you know.
Better property maintenance and code enforcement is on number four.
I think.
They cancel each other out, three and four.
Yeah, are, are we, I mean, cause, cause we're starting down the path of talking about the vision, goals, and objectives here, and what we want this to be. We're getting hung up on what people said, and that's good, we know what people said. But if, if, if we want the, our plan to, um, present and demonstrate a desire to do anything about this, that's the next chapter, that's chapter three.
Yeah.
So let's look at chapter three. Well, because, cause some of the stuff, I mean, I think, and I was just flipping through here, section three point five on, on page seven, talks about housing and neighborhood stability. Uh, and then there's a goal to provide safe and quality housing for all residents by promoting reinvestment, blah, blah, blah. But there's, um, preserve neighborhood character there, um, toward the bottom, that talks about codes, and, um, enforcing codes and things like that. These, that, those are the areas, I think, that could move us toward action. You know, rather than, um, getting into the weeds about the survey responses.
Yeah.
If there's something in chapter two that's a typo, or something inflammatory, like Hispanics, you know, the word in there, that we want, let's get it out, but I think we're better off, um, our time's better managed, uh, looking at chapter three, if we, if we really wanna answer those questions. And I thought we have, I mean, we've, we've been through chapter three, um, six months ago, or whenever that was. We, we, when it was, I don't remember how long ago it was.
We can't remember anymore.
But, um, you know, I, I think we did a thorough review of, of chapter three, and I thought had, um, and I know that we, we did that on the, on the information that we were provided in chapter two as we went along.
I still got, I got questions on three.
Good.
I like this one, page two, vision three point two, it will take time and effort that are currently beyond capabilities due to limited staffing and current workload. So you can say what you want, but we ain't gonna do it. Which, we, we know that, I mean, that's. We're, we're gonna do the best we can.
Wait, wait, let's, let's revisit that, now that I brought that up.
Which page do you want?
On page two, chapter three, section three point two. While the vision as described is desired by many, it will take time and effort that are currently beyond capabilities due to limited staffing and current workload. That's a pretty positive statement. I think we need to revisit that a little bit, that's pretty much saying exactly what you said. Well, thanks for all your input, but we're not gonna do it. That's not how we wanna present this, I don't think. I think we can soften the verbiage on that a little bit, don't you think?
Well, yeah, it just seemed a little, I mean, it's true, factual, but.
And it says we strive towards it.
Could it be said with a softer?
Well, and I don't, I don't think this is, I mean, it seems like a statement about staffing levels at City Hall. I think the statement is more community wide, you know, the economic realities of visions like this, and having investments.
Could we put maybe currently, or something? I think that's just a strong statement, because you've got it in the next sentences. Nevertheless, city staff with appointed and elected officials should strive towards the high level of vision and direction. That's great, but I would just like to see that sentence before that softened just a little bit. We could just a little bit, so it doesn't sound so negative. Anybody else?
Any suggestions on how to do that?
Yeah.
Is the sentence true?
Yes, it is true.
I know, I know it is, but that's why I asked anyway.
Higher staff?
So.
I mean, sure.
I see what you're saying.
That may require, can we put in there, that may require additional, how about that? That may require additional staffing. And that, how's that sound? It might, it will take time and effort that may require additional staffing. That way we're not being so negative. How does that sound?
I, I would say, I would say may require additional staffing, growth in the tax base, economic, um, economic, additional economic activity.
Okay.
A lot of these goals and visions have nothing to do with what we can do here at City Hall.
Right.
They're like, are we gonna get investors coming in and jobs and.
Sure.
Things like that, so, yeah, I think if we, if we make the statement more global, I mean, if we wanna, if we wanna tweak, I think you're right. It is a pretty pointed statement. We want to make it more global so that it's not as pointed.
There's a lot of statements back in here, and I pointed these out three or four times, like invest in IHOP or invest, I mean, uh, affordable housing right now, or, you know, I'm just making all this up, but all these, these development incentives and neighborhood beautification and free money and Kansas, you know, like all that, all that stuff. It's nice that it's all in here, but boy, that, that get, I guess that gets back to, there's not enough staff to do it in a real polite way that says, we can't do it all. We're gonna be selective in what we, we, staff, city staff is gonna be selective in what they can provide.
Alright, then how about this? Leave the first sentence as is because it's true. Change the second one. Nevertheless, city staff with appointed and elected officials should strive. How about change the should to will strive? So, that sentence counters the one before it, and they're both true. Because city staff and current workload, like you said, city's buried with work.
That works too.
Yeah, change, yeah, will strive towards the high level of vision and direction contained in this plan.
Yep.
There you go.
Good job.
I've done my work for the day. I'm going on.
Alright, um.
That means that makes sense to everybody?
Let's get it writing and then read it. Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay.
Um, okay, to, uh, in the, chapter three, page three, two thousand nine in the, in the blue box. DeSoto, the cit, make DeSoto the city of choice to raise a family, work, retire, and build relationships by preserving DeSoto's small-town atmosphere, reside, revitalizing the city's historic downtown by increasing, uh, the confidence to invest in the city and its strategic growth areas and developing stronger connections to the city's excellent schools, blah, blah, blah. Okay, that is a vision statement. So, revitalizing downtown was thirteen out of sixteen. We're putting it in our vision, vision statement as, so I guess is, the question is, is it in our visions? Should it be in our vision, revitalizing downtown? I think I've kind of heard some people think it should be, that, that that's a good, strong-
Vision, I think. Why should it be?
Well, it got thirteen out of sixteen by Holy County.
Well, that was just, it was down. It was like-
There just was twelve things they thought was more important. Doesn't mean that revitalizing downtown's not important. It's just not as important.
Yeah. Okay, just want to point that out. Okay, that shows up again on page four, chapter three, yellow box. The two thousand and seven plan had the same thing, develop, second bullet down, develop strategies for revising downtown DeSoto. That'll probably never go away, and it's, it's kind of a hard sell. Things happen, but they're happening slowly. Okay, on page five, top of page, promote economic diversification. What's that mean, promote it?
R E P C is gonna be pitching it.
City staff to promote it? So, it's a, it's a, it's a vision, it's a plan, it's a city vision to promote diversification, long-term economic stability, blah, blah, blah.
Well, I think what they're talking about here is they want, you know, a wider tax pay. I mean, we've got Hutmaki, we have Merck, we've got some big industries, but we need to maybe infill with some more medium, some additional sales tax. I mean, just so we're not, you know, not that DeSoto's a boom or bust community, but, um, we'll make sure that those economic dips for some industries don't bring us down.
The hang, the, the hangup is promote. What, what action does that spring, you know, what, what is promote? Right? Is that, is that, is that your?
Yeah, what is prom, promote?
What do you mean promote?
Encourage, encourage or promote?
Those two words are interchangeable, I think.
Encourage and promote?
Courage, promote, seek out, um, help, assist.
Target?
Target. Yeah, I mean, you could use all of those and still have the same question. What does that mean?
But isn't that Sarah with her economic development?
Oh, largely. Yeah, I mean, that's the first thing you come to. Yeah, okay. Well, that, that's, that's kind of our-
Reaching out for us.
Yeah, so that'd be market, market the city to, uh, those types of, uh, developments.
Which is pretty much the same as promote.
Exactly. So, it's, it's, it's kind of semantics.
If everybody understands it, and, I mean, you're right. I guess any other word that has the same-
You'd have the same question. I don't think we're gonna change just one word there.
Okay, well, page five, heading three, review and update codes, identify zoning regulations permitting obstacles that may hinder prospective development. And are there examples of that, or is that just like a?
I mean, good examples of, you know, we had a sign ordinance years ago that was overly restrictive, uh, retail, retail outlets couldn't, you know, effectively market their locations.
I remember KJ's, he wanted to, I think, I'll bet this is in there because of that, um, they wanted the seating area out in front.
Yeah.
And they had to get special permission to do that. I think, remember, he was talking about how, I remember when he came and pitched it to us, the guy that did this, that we were too restrictive on what we wanted to do.
Oh, yeah, it could have been. He could have put it in there for that. Um, you know, other examples are, we had some landscaping regulations that were just really heavy, you know, and, and largely ineffective. And so, um, yeah, we, we went through that process of backing, backing off those. Other things are just process or application processes, and requiring too far in advance or too many copies, or is the, is the function of that administratively just a burden? So, I think that's what that's getting at.
Okay.
Do we need to review our codes then on that particular thing, like restrictions?
Well, we always, we always are. I mean, we, you know, occasionally, um, and, and really add, add really a request of a developer or whatever. It says, you know, I don't think I need four parking spaces for every, uh, unit here. I think I only need two, and, and we did that too, so.
Let me kind of fight.
Yeah, I wasn't the only one.
Maybe, we're, uh, yeah, review and update and it sounds like we need to do it. We, we do it on a, on a as-need basis. When it comes, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna grab the regulations and start with heading one and go through them and-
Well, I guess that, to me, that wasn't the intent of that statement. It was more of just constantly monitor, make sure you're not being too restrictive or, or identify those areas. Now, I, since I've been here, I've not had the development communities say, man, you guys are just killing us. Um, I mean, of course, they always cry about excise tax and et cetera, et cetera, but, um, my perspect, I mean, the, the communities I've worked with in the past and by previous consulting, I don't think DeSoto's codes are pretty, I think they're pretty right down the middle of what most communities would, uh, consider reasonable. You know, I mean, like over in Park, everything is a planned unit development. They don't even have hardly any zoning codes. I mean, it's gotta be, you gotta have colors, finishes, stonework. Everything is planned out to the, and there's not much room for the developers to maneuver where we, you know, Mike and I, we work with them a lot of things. I mean, we've got restrictions. Oh, they gotta turn in plans three weeks beforehand, and they gotta have, you know, we don't always, we don't wrap them on the knuckles and say, sorry, you didn't make it by twenty-one days in before with your site plan, you know, we'll accept those, and we just kind of work it into our schedule, so. I guess, I mean, to me, it's just one of those reminders that you need to always be considerate and understand that maybe economics change, things change, and don't just stand on your codes and say, well, that's just the way we do things here. I mean, be open-minded to potentially changing them.
Continuously, continuously review and update codes or somehow, well, alright. I would, I would think maybe some statement like continuously or might-
And remember this, this is under the title of economic development objectives and implementation strategy. So, I think this would be one implementation strategy to meet the economic development goal that was outlined on page four, to expand and diversify a strengthening economic base, et cetera. So, you know, the, those, this is kind of a toolbox here as I read this. Chapter, or page five, yeah, one through four on that page, and then page six, uh, number five. Those are tools in a toolbox to meet, to attempt to meet the economic development objective that was listed on page four. So, I don't think this is a mandate that we have to do this. I mean, clearly not, but it's one of the things.
Codes should be flexible. I mean, codes, codes should, codes should continually update. Codes should be flexible.
Yeah, sure.
Code, I mean, something that other than we're gonna review and update them.
I don't know if we'd want to use the word codes should be flexible.
Well,
That might not work too good.
Alright, I don't have, I don't have a, um,
Yeah.
I don't have a good, I did, just pointing out, I thought it seemed, it seemed, it seems a little awkward. Alright, then, is this true? Item four, page five. The use of financial incentives is necessary to continue to grow and broaden DeSoto's economic base?
Well, if we didn't have a policy, we'd be the only ones without a policy.
So, I mean, that's a true statement.
Yeah, I mean, I would think so.
Alright.
I mean, our economic incentive policy says so.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
You just, you'd be at a big disadvantage if you didn't have. If you just, if you just were, hey, we're the town that just doesn't give anything, so forget it. Yeah, that, that put us at a disadvantage.
I think I see what you're saying, though. It's saying that the use of incentives and levels should be based on that.
Well, long, as, that's a true statement, and everybody's buying in, then, okay.
Didn't things start to kind of revitalize after we done away with the, uh, building fee permits?
Yeah, well, during the economic downturn, we waived building fees and, and we did get fee, but now we didn't have a boom or anything, but we got feedback from those taking advantage of that, that they wouldn't have otherwise built. Um, so, yeah, they had, they had an effect.
It's just saying it's necessary. It doesn't say we have to do it. It's just saying it's necessary, so I can understand that, yeah.
Okay, page, page six. C, D, E, F, and G. All I got is who, who, question mark, who, question mark. Okay, the neighborhood development districts, um, CDIs, blah, 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 blah. If, if that's all good, I have no idea. I mean, leave it in, but I just think I've question marks. Can you explain those?
Well, I guess, you know, the point of these things is to, and these are things that we do. It's just, you know, we're always looking at trying to help developers, businesses, find a way to navigate the best path through our codes, regulations, our taxation policy. I mean, some of the things that they brought up, we don't really do property exchanges, um, but it doesn't mean we couldn't.
We have in the past.
You know?
Yeah, yeah. A lot of these, Richard, are really from, straight from our economic incentive policy. Those ones in N E, the neighborhood improvement district, community improvement, those are specific call-outs in our policy. Now, we have never done, uh, a transportation improvement district or a community improvement district, but we, you know, we have done others. Those just kind of come straight out of our existing policy, really.
Would a community improvement district be like when they offer incentive to business owners to remember where they, they just did that someplace. Where was that that they just did that? Was it Lawrence? Well, Leiford did some, I believe. Would that be with the same thing? Where they're actually giving the property owners incentive and some type of a discount to do something? I don't even remember all the details on it now. But would that be what this would be?
Well, yeah, so we have, we have a, a neighborhood in, uh, N I D, neighborhood improvement district, um, that defines the downtown area, and what we say is if you're fixing up your house, we're not gonna charge you any building private fees.
Okay.
Essentially. There are others that can, that say that we will abate the taxes of your increased property value.
Okay.
Um, uh, there are others that say we'll abate, we'll just abate half your property taxes.
So, we have those in place now?
We don't have that last one. Uh, we don't have the last two in place.
Maybe if we promoted some of that, maybe some, we could get more improvements done downtown. Some of our property owners.
Yeah, yeah, so the downtown, the downtown's a little different deal. A, a lot of cities will have, like, loan programs for down, architectural improvements downtown, so. Um, we've, we've discussed, is that kind of what it was, like a low or no-interest loan sort of thing? Um, yeah, we don't, we don't have a program like that, but we could consider one.
Okay, I'm sorry. That just made me wonder about that.
Okay, um, the, does, does one person's name kind of cover this, Sarah?
No, I mean, that's-
No, this is, this is city council
That's council, yeah.
deciding that they're gonna promote and raise awareness of taxing districts, low-interest loans and grants and technical assistance programs.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a council function.
Okay, um, page seven. Um, okay, page, in the, in the yellow box. Oh, two thousand and seven plan allow a reasonable variety of housing. Page, or two thousand and nineteen, provide safe and quality housing. What, is this, is the city in the, how does the city provide? By inspection? How does the city provide housing?
Well, we don't provide housing clearly, but I think it is-
Says by promoting reinvestment in existing neighborhoods and encouraging well-planned new residential properties. So, that's how. We do it by promoting and encouraging. That's how you provide.
But, okay.
Seems self-explanatory. I can't read the whole thing.
Okay. Due to reversal on the, no, I, I understand.
Trickery.
I didn't read it, I didn't read it right. Gotta be alert.
Trickery.
Um. Didn't anybody else have any questions? I'm, I can't be the only one. I guess not. Alright, um, page, uh, chapter three, page eight, number four, seek out programs and funding for neighborhood beautification and stabilization. And that's again, that's a city, city function to pursue grants. And with that disclaimer somewhere back in three, that staff can only do so much.
But there's Johnson County programs, and that has always been something that I would like to see listed on our website and have brochures out here in the lobby that says the C D B G programs are available. Johnson County has them. You can even get discounted paint and, you know, even list the Habitat Humanities. Put some of those areas out there, and it might be an area for us to put our, get a volunteer brochure made up for people that are low-income or, or, um, physically unable to. We could put that out there, but that's kind of helping with our housing solutions for people.
Okay, and so, so we have identified, item five, page eight, we have identified housing solutions for low-income households can get help by items A, B, C, D. And there it is. It, they're identified in here. Somebody can read that, and then they can go look. For item C, individual development account. For item C, individual development account tax credit. We're not gonna do it for them, but we're gonna identify, we've identified it here.
I think we need to make that information more available, and that's where I'm saying we could put it on our website and on our, have brochures out here. Rather than just reading it in here, because those are excellent programs.
Okay, chap, page ten, chapter three.
That got page nine.
Oh, yeah.
Chapter three, that's where, on the two thousand and seven plan, that's where we've gotta maintain and improve image and appearance of DeSoto for the benefit. It's listed in that first bullet, and it's listed again on the fourth bullet.
Anything we're saying is worth saying twice.
Well, I like that.
Yeah. Alright, planning and partnering. What is, item two on page ten? Not sure I understand who a partner is. Maintain and improve existing infrastructure and programs and broaden the scope of DeSoto's recreational retail offerings. Through effective planning cooperation with partners.
Johnson County. Wouldn't you think county, Johnson County's a part?
I am, yep.
Community. We're planning with them, just like we planned on that big park out there.
Okay. With partners, comma, as Johnson County, okay, um. I like this one statement on page ten, number four. The intent of the plan is to maintain the current level of service and expand only as needed to accommodate growth. And that's, you know, under keeping the cost of living affordable. And that, I think some similar was in the oh seven, um, long-term report, and I like that. I like the part number five, you know, invoke pride, that keep, keep people informed the last state, uh, last sentence there. Kept informed and engaged in civic matters. Like number six, continue to maintain and enhance the city's parks and wrecks, provide healthy lifestyles. That's a real strong point, I think. This, determine the best locations for future trail sections is number seven. Is that Parks and Rec plan, or is that, it should, should?
Yeah, we've, we've.
Are we stepping on their feet a little bit, or what's, or does it matter?
No, not at all. That's, that's fine to have in here as a, as a vision or, or an objective. We are working with the, you know, the Parks and Rec plan's completed. Yeah, trails were like a big, you know, one of the big recommendations of that. That's rolling into the potential bond referendum, maybe for next spring or next year. Park Board's working on that. We've identified potential trail locations, and I've got those shown on map five point two if we ever get to chapter five. Which isn't looking too likely right now, but, um, we've, we've made it a new map of pedestrian and bike map. And I've shown those on, on that map. And so, yeah, this is, that, that's, that's exactly what we're doing, you know, already. So I think that's a good thing to have included here in chapter three.
Okay, um. I like the slogan, the new slogan, build your life with us, takes out a couple words.
Yeah.
Mike, are we supposed to have this finished and a recommendation to the council for their next meeting?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I'll say, I, I didn't expect, um, to be page turning here. You know, I thought, I thought we had chapter one, two, three, and four pretty much solidified. And, you know, from our previous discussions and our previous work sessions with council. Chapter five, we've had some recent revisions based on our last work session with council, and some new mapping that I've got. Yeah, I thought we were gonna kinda focus on chapter five and maybe six, because I don't think we've, on the implementation, it's just that big spreadsheet. Really had a chance to pick through. If we're not there, that's okay. We're not under any pressing immediate deadline. We can do this sort of thing. I would suggest maybe, um, if, if we're, if we're gonna be doing that. It's a work session type of a atmosphere rather than, no, this is a work session atmosphere we've got here, but, you know.
Maybe just kinda, maybe jump into this.
I'm a little surprised, I thought we were a little further along, especially on chapters one through four, than, than as few as we are.
My questions on three are like, I don't understand this, so they can, I, I'm done with three then. That's the rest of them, and they're, they don't amount to anything. It's like, the word accommodate versus like your, that was, is that word provide, target, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
You're just gonna skip those. Chapter, I mean, I'll keep going unless, chapter four. Identify transportation, I didn't find anything in here about mass transportation. Maybe I didn't read part of it.
So, chapter four is future land.
Yeah, actually, transportation shouldn't be on that heading at all. That needs to come out.
I think it's because it says future land use and transportation.
Yeah.
I think that's why I was confused. So maybe we just need to take that out of the header there.
Right.
Yeah, there's, transportation's largely addressed in chapter five.
Okay. And. What's the, uh? Seems like someplace in here I read about. A minimum development requirement of three acres per house on ag zoning. But it wasn't, it was not in the chapter four charts. I, I can't remember where I saw that, but. These, um, on page eight, nine, ten, whatever, that where it says the minimum lot size is determined by city council. But they'll, they're gonna make all the decisions for lot sizes.
Let's get to where you are in that.
Where are you at?
Well, let's, let's, alright, let's go to page eight on the, chapter four, page eight. Mixed use, the purple one at the bottom. Minimum lot size is determined by city council. That shows up there, it shows up one, two, three, four. It shows up at the next four intensity levels that city council is gonna make the determination.
Yeah, so those are straight out of the zoning regs. Zoning, the zoning regs for, uh, really anything above residential, so commercial and industrial on up. Uh, because, because developments are required, um, site plan is required for develop, for those developments. That's why the minimum lot sizes, um, you know, basically are just subject to individual review.
You don't think that oughta come before the planning commission instead of the city council?
Well, that was my question. Should it be, be a slash PC, or, or is this strictly a council?
The reason I say that is, we take the time to research it, city council don't.
Well, city council doesn't, I mean, the plant, the site plan stops here, this is, you're the approving body for that. So it's not that they don't research it, it's just not part of their.
They depend on our recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's why.
So I see your point.
Should we add PC in there? Or should we not?
I'm saying, are these taken directly from our current regs?
Well, I'm, I'm looking now, so. So, starting at, so this is the last residential zoning district, so starting at C one. Intensity lot area, there's no minimum lot area, no minimum lot width for C one. C two does have a minimum lot area and width. O I. Does as well. And, so here's M one, lot area is subject to site plan review, the width is two. And M two is the same way, I believe, yeah. So that's why I say that's probably a holdover just from the existing regs, on that, on that particular chart. And remember, we're trying to define future land use categories. So the intent is not to directly tie existing zoning classifications to the colors on this future land use map. So we wanna make sure, make a clear distinction between existing zoning, which defines land rights, and future land use, which is our vision, so. But, yeah, I think, I think you could probably definitely add planning commission and council in the, in those boxes, and it. Probably be a more accurate way to represent how that's actually done.
Okay. Okay, um, page ten, chapter four, four point nine agriculture. Residential areas not served by a city sewer or water should provide at least three acres per house lot. Does that jive with everything?
Agricultural zoning.
Ours is ten acres.
It's ten, should be ten, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, so change ten, three to ten.
But if this is, I'm trying to read, is it a recommendation maybe that we should? I mean, that gets into our, sort of our rural suburban district, so, yeah, I think it should be ten acres. Well, actually, I was thinking about that.
Yeah, I think you should.
Maybe I will.
Okay, so, so three would change to ten?
Yeah.
Okay, and then, um. Constructive land use practices such as commer, strip commercial development and sprawl inducing conventional residential subdivisions. Are discouraged. What's a conventional residential subdivision? And why is that, um, sprawl?
I don't think it's necessarily just the subdivision itself, but we used to wanna do.
Yeah. Okay, well. Okay, I, I don't understand it, but it doesn't matter. I mean, just long as you're, you're good with it. Single-family residential demand for new single-family rate schemes from first-time buyers to hand, that's good, there's. Uh, page, uh, eleven. There's no mention of the uptown, uptown, uptown district in this. The one where the, uh, people got incentives, you know, smaller lot sizes, does it need to go in here? If not?
Um, well, again, there, um, the uptown overlay district is a, is a current zoning designation.
Yeah.
We're talking about future land use descriptions. But to that point, UDO is contained in the, in the, the. Little charts up here where we're talking about the minimum lot sizes and stuff.
Okay.
So like, in red, commercial, it could include C, C one, C two, O I, and the UDO. So it is, it appears in there, but it's not highlighted.
Okay, well, they, like, these on page eleven, one and two, it's, uh, to, to help stabilize diversity, city housing stock. They include development of vacant parcels, replacement of substandard housing. It seemed to me, that's a good place for uptown district to go, but it, it doesn't need to. I'm running out of stuff for four. I'm done with four.
We're on four, I just wanna go back to this one little sentence. Perspective tendents should include singles, young adults, mingles, newlyweds, and jingles, empty nesters.
Those are pretty unique statements, aren't they?
That's on page thirteen.
Page thirteen.
Those are some unique.
Chapter four, page thirteen, like kinda the bottom of that first paragraph, kinda the middle of it.
Yeah.
I'd never heard that one before.
Consider outdated.
So we're jingles.
You're outdated.
Jingles got money. Well, their pockets, I mean. They got more money than, uh, young singles, no, than, than, than newlyweds. Well, that, that was my take on it, that they got money in their pockets, the, the mingles, or the jingles. Either that, or that's Wild Bill's sidekick. I'm dating myself with that one. Anybody else got any thoughts on jingles? No? Alright.
Add a little humor to this boring.
See how many people pick up on it.
Transportation and public facilities, I'm.
Twice and I didn't catch it.
Anybody got any comments on chapter five?
We've got a new chapter five.
We've got a new chapter five that I revised.
Yeah. Slightly revised. Is that the version in here, Brad, or?
There's not.
Okay.
No, it's just a hard copy.
Okay, so, the ones at your place have been redlined, um, between the version you got in your packets and, and tonight. Really, the only thing that we did is, um, we incorporated more language. And this was as a result of some of the feedback during our joint session about the idea of complete streets. Um, and how complete streets policy ties in pretty, uh, pretty integrally. To our ability to get federal funding for projects through the Mid-America Regional Council. So, Mid, uh, MARK is the regional planning organization for the Kansas City area, we're included, cause we're in Johnson County. Uh, their criteria for funding selection relies on the scoring matrix. That, um, includes, uh, social justice, it includes activity centers. It's highly weighted toward, um, pedestrian facilities, wetlands mitigation, carbon neutral. Means and methods and exposures, multimodal transportation. There is just a well, I would say about at least sixty to seventy percent of those totals points you could score. Are not related directly to infrastructure, um, that we would say. So if we wanna replace, I would just wanna replace a silly bridge, I can't ever get federal funding through that MARK organization. Because seventy percent of the funding has to do with all this other stuff that we typically don't need in just a meat and potatoes. So that's my frustration, but, um, to have it, one element of that is, do you have these policies in your comprehensive plan? So, this'll help us in that vein a little bit, maybe. But, so some of the, uh, the red lines you see there on page three, talk about non, non-motor, motorized transportation elements. And not a complete adoption of complete streets policy, but a move toward, uh, those policies. So really, that was what I wanted to accomplish with that. The other, um, the other thing I did was, the transportation map had been mapped five point, well. the other thing I did was the transportation map had been mapped five point, well, uh, five, map five point one in chapter five is the future transportation map. And on this map and previous versions of this map, I had included the trails and non-motorized transportation on this map. I've taken that out and I've created a, a new map, map five point two, the bike and pedestrian map. And I've made reference to that somewhere on here. It's after all the, um, cross section, the street cross sections and driveway spacing requirements. So it's at the bottom of page thirteen, so section five point eight, we talk about bike and pedestrian way recommendations. None of that, none of that, uh, the language has changed, but I did reference this bike and pedestrian map. So I put that at your places, and if you want to take a look at that, I'll just explain it a little bit. So we talked about the, um, the Parks and Rec Master Plan had a high, a large emphasis on recreation trails and trails in general. And you can break trails out into kind of two functions. One could be just a straight transportation function, just I need, I want to get to my job or I want to get down to the store or something, uh, but mostly what the park plan, um, related to trails was recreation. Uh, so what we did is we took the entire city and we mapped out any potential trail uh, along an existing road corridor or, um, or drainage corridors or, or anywhere that it made sense to put a trail in town. And so what we've done on this map here, the, uh, possible future trails are shown as, as orange if they're asphalt, red if they're concrete, and green if they are mulch. So this map gets a little bit busy, but you can see a green mulch trail going from Riverfest Park along the river out to Widow Big Knife Park, uh, that's, I think that's the only mulch one. Uh, the red ones in town are trails, but these are probably going to be more like sidewalks. We've got one along eighty second street, we've got one along Ottawa down to Riverfest Park. We've got them down ninety first street that's being installed now, we have one down Kill Creek and one out eighty third to, uh, almost Waverly. Those are the concrete trails, and then the asphalt ones would be, um, I, I would kind of liken these to more of the county streamway trails. So we've got these shown out, uh, on the east, east of Kill Creek, certainly east of Waverly is a more rural parts of town. So we're showing trail connections where it makes sense, and some of these go off alignment, basically follow drainage ways, uh, follow creeks or, or steep inclines or whatnot. Some of them are on property lines. Um, so we've got these orange ones kind of all, all over town. The, the major one out west goes from Riverfest along the, along the river uh, to basically a Sunflower Road alignment, and then it follows that government road down that Sunflower Easement Road, uh, to the new Lexington Lake Park, and then continues out to Clearview City along Sunflower. Um, so those are all the trails that the park board is looking at, and we've, we've priced these out as best we can at this stage. Um, and then the park board and council will be working on grouping these trails into reasonable, uh, potential projects to include in a bond referendum. So we're looking at a bond referendum of a, at this point, contemplate about three million dollars. About, and there's three buckets, about a third of that would be improvements to existing parks, just stuff like we want additional lighting down at Miller Park or replace the play equipment, um, you know, at Miller Park or, um.
Fix the drainage at Miller.
Fix the drainage, yeah, uh, it, it's not just Miller Park, but it's all other parks. Improvements to existing parks, a third of it is for a new sports complex, uh, to purchase property, uh, to level the ground, to grow grass, for a soccer field, um, maybe concessions building and parking for that. And then the last third is for trails. And so if we're looking at a third, 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 we're looking about a million dollars worth. Um, what we did at the last park board meeting is kind of try and group these trails into some reasonable assembly of those projects. So one of the projects that would be about a million dollars, we're calling the West Loop. And the West Loop would be this one that goes from Riverfest along the river down Sunflower all the way to Clearview, and then would also connect along eighty seventh street into the Timber Trails area. That'd be about one point two million. Uh, there's two eastern loops that we've identified, um, one would come up Kill Creek Road and actually go all the way down to ninety fifth street, and then would also connect, um, along K ten essentially and, and hit the Johnson County Parks just south of K ten near Hudamaki. Uh, and then the, uh, the second eastern loop would, uh, I think eventually build off that one, but also, uh, go further east, uh, extend along Bluff Road or eighty second street and the East Bottoms come up Corliss Road, down to ninety fifth, and then along K ten back west and back in to connect to that streamway. So those are shown on here as potential groupings. The other thing on this map I've shown is, um, bicycle, bike routes, essentially. And those are the thick, kind of under all the other stuff, I know it gets really busy, but if you look kind of under all this, you see this thick, um, yellow greenish lines on there, so the bike routes are eighty third through Lexington, down Lexington out to a hundred and third street. That's the obvious one. Another bike route would be seventy ninth street down the West Bottoms, out Edgerton Road, back to K ten, and then of course down, uh, Kill Creek and headed down south toward Gardner. I've shown another one along Corliss. So, you know, just showing those on the map doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to go put bike lanes out there, but, um, where we have resources to sign, to share the road signs or, uh, those sorts of designations, um, you know, I think those corridors are identified as one that we would, uh, that we would look to be doing those sorts of things.
So a bike lane might, like, would just be a designated lane over towards the side of the road?
Yeah, well, right, so if you want to do, um, if, if you want to do a bike lane, it really has to, you have to have four feet of clear space that's at least striped out and identified and signed. You have to have it on both sides of the road.
On both sides?
Yeah, you can't just put one on one side of the road.
Okay.
Uh, traffic engineering and, and, you know, general practices such that you, it's not advised to only put it on one side. So Kill Creek Road is actually wide enough from eighty third down to Kill, down to K ten to do that. Uh, as is ninety first street, we will be doing that here with the project going on. We're gonna, we're gonna stripe ninety first for bikes from Lexington all the way out to Sunflower. It'll be a stripe for bike.
Are you talking about wide enough with the existing pavement or we're adding?
No, with the existing pavement, Kill Creek Road, yes. It's thirty six feet wide. We only need eight feet, eight, eight of that for a bike lane, that leaves plenty for two travel lanes. So.
So the signs are part of that, because I know down there, you know, where we live on Cedar Creek, it's, we have a lot of bikes down there. A lot of bikes, it's a beautiful ride down.
Yeah, I guess so.
But it's, it's, um.
Well, maybe we should show it.
Yeah, it's, people really enjoy that.
Yeah.
But it's kind of scary when you go around those corners and.
Right.
Somebody's driving with a tractor or something and, yeah.
Trying to have any tractor trailers and giant farm equipment, everything else going up and down in front of my house. I pity anybody in the bucks.
Especially if they don't have their lights on.
Or they're riding two or three of brass like they do and all the rest of the crap they pull. They follow the rules would be nice.
Yeah, so that's, that's a new, that's a new map, so five point two. All the other maps after that just got, uh, the number changed from five point two and up.
Lot of possibilities, yeah.
So that's, that's the changes to chapter five. I think everything else in chapter five, oh, the other, the other changes on chapter five, I was going, speaking of bike lanes, um, I am going to revise these figures, these cross section figures to show bike lanes, uh, at least for certainly on the arterial here, um, maybe even on the collector, but not on the residential. So those, those, these two cross sections may change or will change. They might like, but they'll probably look totally different, I can't take, I can't do anything with this image as we have it now. So I'll have to come up with something entirely new. So as for the rest of chapter five, um, really, I don't think there's been any change since, certainly since the last time we saw it. Lot of emphasis on what we've done lately in terms of, of infrastructure for the water and the sewer, and also emphasis on the Sunflower, uh, the Sunflower property. We have a map.
Has there been any thought about replacing that little bridge over railroad tracks on eighty third street?
Lot of thought about it, that's the one I've applied to MARK for federal funding for, uh, twice already, and been just shot out of the water because it doesn't connect to activity centers, and it's not on a multimodal path, and it's not an environmental justice tract, and you wouldn't believe.
It goes to the VFW and the, and the wheel, also activities.
Yeah, no.
What's estimated cost to replace that thing?
Uh, it, it's really highly dependent on what the railroad's going to make us do. We think it could be as little as about nine hundred thousand and as much as about one point six million. If the railroad makes us raise it, because right now it's, it's not tall enough to meet their current standards, but it's not a B N S F main line, so they're still kind of kicking us around a little. Uh, if we can put it at the elevation it's at now, I think we'd do it less than a million. If we got to raise it eight feet, it's probably going to close.
That's.
Closer to one point eight or something.
Be interesting with the surrounding land or.
Yeah, well, we're talking about retaining walls and, yeah, maybe some condemnations or purchases of property. Yeah, it's, it gets messy. So.
Challenge.
It's challenging. I hope, I hope they do, you know, it's not a main line forum, so.
The only thing it goes to is very Pacific, basically.
Yeah. Hudamaki too.
Drops their plastic pellets off.
Hudamaki does.
Oh, do they get some stuff on there too?
Yeah, uh, bulk, bulk material. So that's it, that was chapter five, okay. And then, have we, have we been over, is, this isn't the first time we're seeing chapter six, is it, Brad?
We've read chapter six, uh, language.
Yeah. It's the whole tabular format.
Will somebody want to walk us through chapter six? Are we supposed to read it and ask questions?
Well, I mean, chapter six really is just sort of the boiled down version of. Three and four sort of put together, it does, you know, but there's a lot of cross-reference being between those chapters. It's, it's almost like the crib notes version of, you want to find something quick and not have to dive through the rest of the report. You can at least initially go to, um, these objectives that are shown in chapter six. And it does state in many cases, uh, where else you should look as far as incentives and like, for instance, on the bottom of page two of chapter six, plan recommends the incentive section is listed in three, fours. If you kind of want to cross-reference, you can do that, but, um, this is sort of the, the, like I said, the, the crib notes version of the comp plan really in, in general, as far as, you know, some specific things that here's, here's what we're going to do and, um, you know, like, like Mike just talked about, create a comprehensive trail system. Well, that's what we just, uh, evaluated with, with his efforts there and, um, so that's kind of really what chapter six is about, it's, it's, it's information I think we've already covered to a greater degree into the report itself, but it is sort of the, the, the shorter version of, of that where you can just, um, evaluate some of our efforts over time and make sure that we've kind of checked those boxes.
It's kind of nice you've got the, uh, like for example, on page five, number six, obje- objective six, identify housing solutions for low income households. They can just go here and you did everything except put the telephone number in. So that's pretty good. This is, this is actually pretty helpful.
Amazing, in many ways, it's kind of like an executive summary, but it's, it's not written like an executive summary, but it is, it does have that sort of, uh, more concise.
On that one though, in housing rehab programs, they could contact Johnson County.
Yeah, we can list, we should list Johnson County's.
Page.
Page five, objective six, D, housing rehab program, you can contact Johnson County. You'll probably get a lot easier on information.
Yeah, we can certainly add Johnson County's, Johnson County does have a fairly comprehensive, uh, housing program that.
That we could tap into.
Right.
So most major topics are here. Is there something in this chapter about, uh, continual revision of, um, building codes or development codes?
Well, I guess we'll, we'll take a look, I mean, I know it's, it's, it's part of our overall charge is to obviously ultimately annually look at this and, and make revisions.
I think it says on page two, objective three, review and update codes. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. Number two. Yes, review and update codes. It reads so much easier when it's in simple form like this. So do you agree with this, Linda, on page four, item, objective two, item B, continue to issuance of citations? Item B, objective two, item B.
Absolutely. No, I don't. Because the issuance and citations, the issuance of the citations and the prosecution of repeat offenders for any properties or structures that present a danger. So it's not necessarily, they shouldn't just be presenting a danger. In my opinion, preserving the nar- neighborhood character, it doesn't have to be a danger when the house is dilapidated and contributing to blight.
How about just that, that violate city maintenance code?
I'll go with that.
Yeah, that'd be a good issue.
Yeah, not present danger.
Is there, is there, like on, uh, page four, objective three, absentee landlord issues, is that a thing? Here in DeSoto? Is there, is there, like, on page four, objective three, absentee landlord issues, is that a thing here in DeSoto?
Somewhat.
A lot.
Somewhat.
It's pretty much a problem every community has at some, some level.
I like that.
I mean, I don't, I just wonder if the word absentee needs to be there or not. Because, like, what difference does, I mean, you, you go to the landlord, if there's a rental in it and it's got trash in the yard, you don't go to the occupant, you go to the landlord. That's the way it's always been.
Address landlord issues, not absentee landlord issues.
Yeah, 'cause how would you classify an absentee landlord? Anybody living outside city limits?
That's kind of...
Well, I'm just thinking...
I, I agree, I think, you stay in there, but not the absentee part, just landlords.
Yeah, right, drop, drop absentee.
Yeah.
In most cases, it's pretty hard to argue with, you know, like, they're just a confined statement from the five chapters. That's pretty darn concise.
But in referencing that, taking out the absentee landlord, could you, when you do your provision, could you make sure that it doesn't say anything about absentee on chapter three, let's double check that?
Well, I should remember seeing it, but maybe. Like on page six, the partnering people are identified. School districts, churches, civic organization, and private business. Like this on page six again, objective four, keep the cost of living affordable. The one about maintain current levels.
Last one, B, I think, is what you're looking for, is continuous issuance of citations.
Yeah, but this was about landlords, absentee landlords. I don't think, I don't think it says absentee.
I don't remember reading it. My ears perk up when I see the word landlord, so...
Yeah, you just gotta watch those kind of guys.
I know, man, they're shifting. They tell you one thing and do another. Like, I like this object four, keep the cost of living affordable, page six, maintain current level of service and, and ex... Well, maintain the current level of service and expand police, sheriff, fire, water, sewer, and other public services only as needed to accommodate growth. That's good. We just don't add three more sheriff guys out there watching the California stops. The guy that got my ass, yeah. They do it in California, sir.
Johnny, have you had anybody racing down the alley lately?
Oh, not for a couple of days.
I saw one go by today.
Had somebody doing burnouts in it a week or so ago. Still got the evidence behind my fence. Yeah. I think it was, guy was visiting the people behind us and got pissed. 'Cause he stood there, he stood there for thirty seconds, running his tires off.
All right. Page six, item objective four, keep the cost of living affordable. Pass the cost of expanding public services to the newly annexed areas. And developers rather than paid for by the existing residents. Well, don't, don't you commonly like, isn't that one the incentives? We'll do all the infrastructure, or if, wasn't the incentive to build the roads and the infrastructure for Burger King, wasn't that part of the package?
Yeah, well, we didn't pay for any of that. All we did was abate the tax revenue, so, so the city's got it out.
The sales tax goes back to doing that.
Yeah, that's, that's one of those, you know, you always want development to pay for itself.
Yeah.
And so, one of the things you do when you're considering whether or not to give an incentive is you do a return on investment calculation, kinda. And you see, you know, if, if we abate these two million dollars in taxes, will we get that back over time?
Yeah.
If the answer's yes, then you, you know, you do it, as long as it's in an area where, that you want to incent, and the development is the type of development that you want in your community. So, you know, without the whole incentive question, then yeah, you want that developer of the new industrial park to pay for his own roads and pay for his own sewers. And make sure you do that, and that you're not just lining his pocket by extending sewers out to his place, that he is then just gonna pass on that value to his customers and put that straight in his pocket. That's what, that's what you're able to do when you incentivize something like that. You're able to make sure that that money goes into those roads and that that economic benefit is realized by the rest of us.
And we're thinking back to Burger King people.
Yes.
No, they're monkeying around with, well, the sign, they're actually considering a special use permit for a pole sign, so...
You gotta be kidding me.
No, what's wrong with that, Mike? Don't go prejudging stuff.
That's the incentive, we're flexible on our regs, you know?
Yeah, I thought we just went over that.
We just went over that, Bob, what the hell's wrong with you?
And we said we didn't want the sign on the neighbors' property.
Yeah.
So, we gotta get some options.
Yeah. Could we, could we have one of those things that, like a gorilla that inflates and Burger King?
A weight can.
Yeah. Well, you did a good jo-, I, I like this last chapter. Man, this is so much easier to read than...
Well, you're, you're correct about that. In some ways, you think, you know, really, it's the last, Chapter Four, Five, and Six are the ones that are probably the best in the, in the report. But you gotta go through the public engagement, and strengths and weaknesses, and all those types of things to get there. So, it's part of the process.
Yep. So, I guess from here, we present the draft to the council. After, we'll make the changes that we talked about here, and then present that draft to the council. And then, you know, depending on what happens there, probably more revisions, maybe more revisions to make. But then, call a public hearing for August?
Yes, August twenty-seventh would be the...
Yeah, here. And so...
Right.
So, you'll have another opportunity to have a look. We might, we might have more revisions at that point, and we could table it, or, you know, or forward a recommendation to the council at that time for the final adoption.
What's the, if you could walk us through the proposal for Sunflower? 'Cause I remember last time, it, there was a bunch of land designated as some, some reloaded prefix, like UFOs. See, PDFs, or, no, that's, that's a graphic tool. You know what I'm talking about, there were some...
Yeah.
Just tell, tell me what, what, what chart, what page, and describe long-range plans for...
Um, so, the future land use map is, is probably the culmination of everything that we're doing related to Sunflower. Do you have that, hard copy? I don't have a copy I can pull up here, but the map 4.2, future land use map 4.2. You can see that in our current future land use map, the one we're operating off now, Sunflower is blank. We don't have, we don't have future land use designations shown for Sunflower. But we do in this one. So, you can see down to Hundred and Twenty-seventh Street, we have, you know, a mixture of commercial up by Hundred and Third Street, followed by mixed use, and then there's some light industrials, heavy industry in the middle, and more mixed use south of there. The area that's already planned for parks, or already been designated as going to be turned over to Johnson County Parks, is shown as parks there. Now, that is kind of the culmination of a lot of the stuff that we did in Chapter Five relating to the fact that, that we're infrastructure planning essentially the northern portions of Sunflower. So, we have a map, map 5.9, which is referenced in Chapter Five, Sunflower Infrastructure. So, on this map, I've got it up on the screen here, you can see that we've identified some of the more environmentally clean areas in the lighter blue shading. And then, we've identified how we're gonna provide, or the, the city of DeSoto's sewer system can be expanded into those areas and provide service to those areas. We're showing arterial road network through those areas in those, in those yellow lines. And then, also, extension of public water mains into those areas. So, we're showing full-service utilities needed to support the land use designations that are on the plant. In Chapter Five, we talk a lot about the current state of the cleanup, and the fact that our water plant's out there, and the interplay over the last couple decades between us and them, and our intent to annex that area as a reasonable extension of the growth, understanding that it could be a very slow burn out there in terms of how long that might take.
Okay, thank you.
That's where we've got Sunflower in play.
Anybody wore out on it?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.